5:45, so I will call to order the August 5th, 2021, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll rise. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have public comment time. And we, okay, here we go. We have one, two, three, four people, five people signed up, so we'll probably have to limit it to two, three minutes for public comment time. When I call your name, if you'll come to the microphone and give your name and address for the clerk's record. First of all, Indion Jackson.
Indion Jackson, 11 Mountain Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina, 28791. Can I take this off? First of all, you shouldn't be, none of you should be offended by any time that I try to come up here and speak about the injustices of the system that you all work for and that we all try to abide by. I just wanted to state that. So anyways, we have some great things planned for Seventh Avenue and for the Green Meadows community, for the Black community here in Hendersonville. And we are trying to invite you guys. We are very much about inclusion. We are very much about, not about exclusion. We want you guys to come and see what we're doing on September 5th. We're having a barbecue at the Sullivan Park in Green Meadows. We're gonna have dances out there, gonna have food out there. It's gonna be fun, good vibes, great timing, because the Apple Festival will be going on at that time also. Just come down the street. You guys are doing a lot of work in that area anyway, so it'd be nice to definitely see you guys amongst us on September 5th, on Sunday, when it's, hopefully that, you know, the sun will be bright and you guys can come out. No excuses to not come.
What time, Indion? What time, Indion?
Oh, what time is it?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, September 5th, Sunday. Come and enjoy some culture with the community that I know you guys are very interested in and love. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Colley.
Hello, I'm Crystal Colley, and I reside at 627 Fifth Avenue West. I'm here today to ask for a building dedication, actually two. We have our new police department that is basically completed, and it would be wonderful if Donnie Parks, who served Hendersonville for over 30 years in service as a police officer and as a chief of police here, to have that dedication of the police department that is in a predominantly African-American community and neighborhood, Brooklyn, also off of Ash Street. He's a wonderful leader, as you all know. Actually, on February the 7th of this year, he was nominated as an African-American leader. That was highlighted for the Black History Month. Also, a few days ago, another wonderful leader, role model, Terry Martin, who is retired. There is a new fire station that will be built. It would be wonderful, a beautiful thing, if this city would also honor a second African-American who gave buildings that would bear the names of an African-American man at that, plus a leader. Would be wonderful for the city of Hendersonville, for the history as well. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Larry Phillips.
Greetings. Larry Phillips, 1102 Pine Brook Circle, Hendersonville, 28739. Greetings, Mayor, Council, Administration, and Department Heads. I have not in the present nor in the past been against Hendersonville Fire, City Fire, the Chief, or its personnel. I am here for the simple reason to highlight why myself and a group of petition signers to preserve the historic landmark Boyd Park. I have asked City Clerk to hand out a packet of information. I do want to say thank you for the assistance and professionalism in information assistance. Here we go. We're starting back in April 1936 Hendersonville Board Meeting. Exhibit A, the triangle piece of land in the city bound on the east of North Main Street, South Eighth Avenue, and West Church Street. Page two, it is further ordered that the board, for and on behalf of its members and of the city, express its most grateful appreciation to the donor for the sum contributed for the development and improvement of said park and that such appreciation may ever be manifested by its proper care, management, and preservation. Exhibit B, land swap in 1993, on page three, is the description of the 1.59 acres land referred to as Boyd Park. Exhibit C, explanation of Exhibit B, special called meeting, February 11th of 1993. On page one, this meeting was held for the purpose of discussing the swapping of two properties, Boyd Park and Edwards Park. Page two, Commissioner Wright made the following motion of the city to swap Edwards Park and the school board to exchange for Boyd Park. Still no mention of property to be used for the Hendersonville Fire Station. Exhibit D, regular meeting, February 1998. Page one, the consensus of the council was for a subcommittee for the Fire Department, Chris Carter, Commissioner of Oak, Fire Chief Charles King, to proceed with the design of a fire station at Boyd Park with minimal impact on the site. Exhibit E, regular meeting, November 5th of 1988, where Mr. O'Kane, he stated in the building design their intent to build in the area where the existing building is placed, preserving the miniature golf course and tennis courts. On page three, council was unanimous and the motion was carried. The reason why the land swap is not a good idea on Exhibit F, land gifted to the city by Kimberly Clark, states in their grantee agrees and accepts the deed subject to the following restriction covenants, that no part of the property shall be used directly or indirectly directly for any purpose whatsoever except for the public recreation purpose. I have enclosed, in closing, I have laid out the city of Hendersonville minutes stating back to 1936, where board members have preserved with minimum disturbance throughout the history of Boyd Park. Myself and other signees have the same feeling as Bert Boyd, to preserve and protect our park for future generations. I have submitted updated names to the city clerk of 1,559 of those who have signed online at BoydPark.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Kay Phillips, you will be having time later on for your presentation, so that's probably why you wanted to speak, right?
Okay.
Okay. Is it Robert Allen? The last, last person who signed in?
Madam Mayor, that was more of a question for staff.
Okay. Is there anyone attending virtually who wishes to speak? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised at the moment, Mayor.
Okay. We had one public comment submitted digitally from Renato Flores, 832 Fourth Avenue West, Hendersonville, 28739. And his comment is, noise pollution from airlines all the time of day and night. We are becoming more and more of a city and are looking control of our peace and quiet. I'm not sure what we can do about the airlines, but he is...
Were we talking about flights?
Oh, I thought he was talking about...
I don't know.
Like the lines on the streets.
I thought even air brakes, jack brakes and stuff.
Air brakes?
Airlines.
Well, airlines is what he said, so I'm not sure exactly what. He may want to contact the city and explain a little more clearly what it is he is concerned about. Okay. All right, that is all the public comment then. So we then have consideration of the agenda, and I believe Mr. Connet has some...
Yes, ma'am.
...changes he would like to suggest.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor vote, members of City Council. I would like to remove two items. I'd like to remove Item M under the consent agenda. Item M, that will be placed back on your September agenda. Also, would like to remove Item D, special appropriations under new business. That will be put on your August workshop meeting. So remove those two. I'd like for you to remove those two items, please. Also, I'd like to adjust the order under new business. Adjust Item Number C, move it to Item B, which is the Code of Ethics complaint, and move City Park Development Discussion to Item C from Item, from B to C. Just reverse the order of those two items.
Madam Mayor, move City Council approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda with those changes, say aye. Those opposed, say no.
Aye.
Okay, yes. And Mr. Smith is joining us over virtually, as he is out of town. All those opposed to the agenda with those, as amended, say no. Eyes have it, and we are...
Mayor vote, I hate...
Do we have to do it?
They get to do roll call.
Have to do a roll call. Okay. Those in favor of the agenda as amended? Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So there are no noes left to be had. So the agenda is approved as amended. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Not a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. One was deleted.
Madam Mayor, move City Council approve the consent agenda as amended. Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda? Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Okay. Presentations, quarterly MVPs. Mr. Connet?
Mayor vote, members of City Council. It's my pleasure to recognize three of our teammates tonight as part of our quarterly MVPs. We had a nice lunch with these three folks and a couple other folks, teammates today, to recognize them for their efforts. And I'll start with Ms. Casey Sutterberg. Casey is a second shift employee at the wastewater treatment plant. She was asked at the last minute to give a tour of the wastewater treatment plant to members of the Henderson County Rescue Team. This was her first time giving such a tour, and the expectation was to host 10 to 12 people. The group then arrived, the group that arrived consisted of 30 to 40 personnel, county vehicles, trucks, and ambulances. With such a large group, Casey kept her composure, stayed professional, and answered all the questions, then divided everyone into small groups, which took longer but allowed her more interaction with the attendees. Casey is and always has been a true team player for the city wastewater treatment facility. Thank you, Casey. Second, Fire Engineer Chris Hearn. On a medical call, the patient became incontinent while unconscious, leaving some mess at the scene. Fire Engineer Hearn took it upon himself to clean up the mess and to make the place presentable. By doing this, he helped the husband so he could go to the hospital to be with his wife and not be concerned with what might be left behind. So I'd like to congratulate Chris Hearn for being recognized as an MVP and appreciate what he does. And then finally, also in the Fire Department, our Fire Marshal, Mike Ostrander. HFD received a Facebook message telling of all, of an encounter a lady and her great nephew had while eating downtown. Fire Marshal Ostrander came to the table with a bag of firefighter goodies. He got down on his knees, so he was at eye level with Graham, showed him all the items, and then engaged in a wonderful conversation about how important school is, about being good, and of fire safety. God bless Fire Marshal Ostrander for taking time away from his busy day to make a five-year-old boy's day magical. So I'd like to thank Michael Ostrander for his going above and beyond. And all three for a great quarter and being our quarterly MVPs. And thank all of our teammates for what they do to help the citizens of Hendersonville.
We appreciate all our employees and are glad that we can recognize some of them through this MVP program. All right. Public hearings, we have a street closure, 1804 Meadowbrook Terrace, the Kirby family. And who is doing this?
They should be online.
Okay.
Tyler, are you here? Or Lou?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We do have a street closure request for 1804 Meadowbrook Terrace. You had the initial certificate on your August meeting date, excuse me, your July meeting date. Can you advance the slide for me? I thought I, of course, I can't do that myself. This is located, this, that's a small unopened alleyway. You can see that it actually is under an existing building and is located just off of Highway 25 North, kind of near the Ingalls, Meadowbrook Terrace. Kind of comes in right behind Papa's and Beer up there. So that's the location. Next slide. Give you a little bit more of a sense of where it is. And next slide. This is the motion for approval. We also have a motion for denial, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. If not, Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this street closure? Either in person or virtually?
No one's raised their hand online, Mayor.
Pardon?
No one's raised...
No one? All right, and no one here? So we will close this public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, move City Council adopt an ordinance permanently closing a portion of an unimproved right-of-way lying within property described in a deed recorded in the Henderson County Registered Deed Book 1447 at page 582, having pen of 9569-44-6625.
Is there any discussion? Not? We will vote on this motion, starting Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So the ayes have it, and that street has been closed. Thank you. New business, Item A, a resolution to select contractor for 2021 resurfacing project.
Mayor vote, Tom Wooton is on Zoom. I'll ask Tom to unmute.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. It's my pleasure to present the, our annual resurfacing project for your consideration tonight. We advertised for formal bids, and we received six bids, all local companies. And we opened those bids on July 30th. Tarheel paving was the low bidder at $420,061.19, and we would like to move forward with selecting Tarheel paving as our contractor for this year's work. You have, the bid package was in the, in your package as well as a map and the resolution, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Counsel, either discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council approve the resolution to select a contractor for the 2021 street resurfacing project and direct the Director of Public Works to execute a contract with the lowest bidder.
Is there any discussion? If not, we will vote on this motion. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Mayor votes aye. Motion also passes, and we have our, can go ahead with that contract. Thank you. Next, we flipped the next two. So the next item is the Code of Ethics complaint. Mr. Connet, did you want to say anything to begin with, or should I?
Madam Mayor, I'll just, I'll be glad to answer any questions about process and if counsel would like, and how we made the decision, but I'll turn it to you.
Okay. We will, at this time, hear from the complainant, Kay Phillips. All members of the council received a full copy of the written complaint, but if you would like to cover any of that material or any documentation for that material, we can't add to that material, but if you would like to make a presentation, please do so.
Okay, I'm Kay Phillips. I live at 94 Meadowwood Drive, Hendersonville, North Carolina, at 28739. Greetings, Mayor, City Council, Administrative Office. In response to Jerry Smith, Code of Ethics, response of July 20th, '21, why was I not mailed or contacted about this matter before it was, I had to read it on the agenda to get my stuff prepared for my response back to him? I have given the City Clerk copies to the respectful submitting on my response to Jerry Smith, responses to the Code of Ethics. I think it is very important that our City Council take care of letting someone else that's in the council not be the, I realize that he is the pro-Mayor, but he was the one who did all the talking about the land swap. And I think that we ought to have some response for the ethic of his position and the conflict of interest on the matter. I thank you, and I guess I'll just wait to hear from whatever happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Do y'all have any questions to ask me about my...
Any questions for Ms. Phillips?
No questions?
Okay. Thank you. The council has also received a full written response from Mayor Protem Smith, as well as a copy of a letter from Dr. John Bryant, Superintendent of the Henderson County Public Schools. Mr. Smith, would you like to say anything at this time?
Yes, I would. So as I laid out in my response to Ms. Phillips' complaint, and as is also laid out in a letter from Dr. Bryant, there is no conflict of interest. I have received no personal benefit at all as a teacher in Henderson County Public School System for any action I've ever taken that's related to the schools as a council member, and in particular, the discussion of the transfer of properties that relate to Edwards Park and, of course, Berkeley Park. So with regard to a violation of any state statute, there has been, there is no personal gain that I've received, which is sort of the essence of a conflict of interests. So I think you guys have all had a chance to see my remarks. Obviously, if you have any questions, you can ask me. But I think Dr. Bryant's letter speaks for itself in that as the head of the school system, and certainly the one chosen by the school board to run the school system, he lays out very clearly that there is no personal benefit that I receive whatsoever from anything that I do on council with regard to my job as a teacher at Hendersonville High School.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith? At this time, a motion is in order to excuse Mayor Protem Smith from the council's deliberations and vote on this matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 160A-75A as it involves his own official conduct. Someone like to move to excuse Mr. Smith?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? If not, we will do the roll call. Vote, Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Can I vote to recuse myself?
Mr. Smith?
I'll vote aye, yes.
And the Mayor votes aye. At this, at this point, we were just discussing procedure. The ayes have it, and at this point, Mr. Smith will no longer participate in any deliberation or vote. Counsel, discussion, comments? Or a motion?
Madam Mayor, based on the information submitted, I move that the council finds that by voting on R21-55 that Mayor Protem Smith did not violate the city's Code of Ethics nor applicable law.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion, I will still do the roll call. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And the Mayor also votes aye that Mayor Protem Smith did not violate the city's Code of Ethics based on the information that we all received and reviewed ahead of time. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Smith can now, again, join in discussion of the following rest of the items of business. City Park Development Discussion, Mr. Connet?
Mayor vote, members of City Council. For many months and weeks, we've been talking about future park development in the city and thought it would be appropriate to get general guidance from the City Council on several of these items as we go forward with planning not only the construction of the fire station, but also of other potential park development around the city. So thought we'd get guidance from, because we do need to begin... So, thought we'd get guidance from, because we do need to begin moving forward. So, number one, why are we discussing this? Again, Fire Station 1 will result in the relocation of the Putt-Putt and the tennis courts. Also, as you've seen in the newspaper, and we know the Kiwanis Club is raising money to build a splash pad, and we must start planning and design work in order to move forward in a timely manner. So, tonight, decisions, these are the only three decisions we really are guidance tonight. We'd like to have a final kind of decision, the location of the Putt-Putt and the tennis courts, location of the splash pad, and how quickly do you want to move forward with the Dogwood Park? And I have, for each one of these, I have some options, and also some guidance there. So, we'll start, number one, with the easiest one, in my opinion, is the tennis court relocation. We have two alternatives here. One would be moving the tennis courts to Patton Park. We would propose to remove the old racquetball courts that have fallen in disrepair and have become used for unsavory activity. We would, at that point, construct two tennis courts next to the existing tennis courts, and you would ultimately receive, have four tennis courts, lighted tennis courts at one location there at Patton Park. The other option would be to construct them at Berkeley Park. You possibly could partner with Henderson County to build the courts. We know that in the long-range plans of the schools, that they would have six to eight courts there, and it may be an opportunity. However, understandably, if we did wait for the Berkeley Park option, that could be sometime in the future, because the county schools are not committed to when they may build those courts. But it is an option to replace the courts that we'll be relocating, associated with the fire department construction. So, just, our recommendation is number one, but we do have option two there if Council should desire to wait and work with the school system. Or, we could possibly work with them and build two courts at Berkeley. That's another option I just now thought of, and then they could add on to it at a future date. But, I have not had that discussion with the school systems, but I feel like it would be an option. So, any guidance or thought about that, how you would like for us to proceed?
From my two cents, I wouldn't go with Berkeley. I think the bureaucracy of that could really drag it down. And, I mean, we don't even have any idea exactly where they'd want the courts. So, I like your suggestion of initial one, of locating them at Patton.
I like them at Patton, too.
I think having them close to downtown is better.
Alright, very good.
I agree.
Thank you. So, we'll proceed with the planning for that particular location.
In that aspect of it, can we also have them multi-use for pickleball as well?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I'm happy to say they actually get more use for pickleball today, as they do for tennis. Second item is the Putt-Putt relocation. We have-
John, may I ask you a question? I apologize.
Yes, sir.
With regard to the removal of the racquetball courts and putting the tennis courts in place, does that have to wait for Fire Station Number 1 to get started? Or is that something that we could begin planning now?
Oh, absolutely, Councilmember, since I think we could begin that process now, particularly as the property is transferred with the exchange with the, with the school system and the city. Some of the funding goes through that transfer, but once we have that funding, we could move forward with the demolition and begin the planning work for that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question following up on that. Since the, there's a lighting revampment, I guess, going on already at Patton, would the new tennis courts that would be going in instead of the racquetball be lit as well?
Absolutely.
And is that something we should be doing at the same time, or planning for that?
So, we, the lights at the current tennis courts were upgraded a couple of years ago, those can be moved. The plan is, is to take the new lights that we purchased two or five years ago, two or three, four, five years ago, we will move those to, and yes, we'll be able to make the connection there, there'll be electricity there, and we'll just make the connection, so. So, both, all, at that point, then, all four tennis courts will be with new lighting, will have up-to-date lighting, which will be very positive, so. Relocation of the Putt-Putt, we discussed a couple of different options here. One, the first one would be Edwards Park, would be to remove the Girl Scout hut there, as we know is in bad shape, and we've been able to provide housing or a location for the Girl Scout at Whitmire Center, and they're very happy at that location. We would then construct a new Putt-Putt facility with a concession stand and bathrooms. We also have just playing around with the idea of constructing a picnic shelter for group gatherings, such as birthday parties, so. And with the project that the county's going to take on in the VFW, which is going to have some meeting room and gathering space, we thought that it may work well together to have the location there to where you can have indoor/outdoor events, and use the Putt-Putt for various events. That's one option. The second would be possibly down Dogwood Park. The benefit there is, is close to downtown. We would also construct concessions and bathrooms, which may serve other amenities at the park there, so you could dual-use there for the concession and the bathrooms. And then, just finally, I put a question mark, is there another location the Council would like for us to consider? But, those are the two options that we've talked about. I know there's been a priority of the Council to keep the Putt-Putt near downtown, as close as possible to the current location. So, these are the two options that we would propose to you. And we would, before I go into further, we, we would use, we were talking to our architects about the design of the Putt-Putt, and there's actually special fir, there are firms that specialize in mini-golf facilities, and so we would be engaging this firm that specializes in mini-golf to, as we relocate and renovate, to make it, to bring the elements that we have and incorporate our elements, but also make some improvements as it relates to ADA and other things to make the little nicer amenities.
I think that's the big advantage of moving it, is to be able to make it handicap accessible. If someone is with a walker or wheelchair or something, there's no way they can get to the holes as they are right now. At least, many of them just are not available, so.
If you're looking for input, again, I absolutely don't want it at the Dogwood. To me, to take it down there, it would take away that space that I hope to see someday, in a nice real green canopy, for a little place to get away from. And, I just don't believe that's the place for it. And I know you guys are very upset about this, Phillips, and I understand. But I'd like to also make sure we're going to carry the name over. I know it's not perfect, but we tried, and I mean, we really tried everything to get it somewhere else. I'm talking about the Larkhorn Putt-Putt. So, but anyway, that's what it's going to be. I've read it all, I've lived here, too.
This is not public comment time, I'm sorry.
But anyway, my point is- I did, I did. But I'm saying, we can't just go back and forth, and I respect your efforts.
Okay, thank you. At this point, yes. You can, you can, you can write all the council members, or speak individually to the council members, but public input at this point is, is over for today.
And you know how to find me, so that's why we're live there. But, I would prefer it not be at Dogwood, I'd like to leave that open. And definitely Edwards Park would be a better location for me.
I like the idea of the shelter at Edwards Park to have the birthday parties, because I mean, it's a great place to have a birthday party, but you still need space to have the actual party. So, I think Edwards Park would be a great space for it. Is there room at Edwards Park to have parking?
So, there, at the Dog, at the existing Girl Scout hut, there's some parking that will remain with the property of the city. And also, we will be working on a cross-parking easement between us and the county. So, there, the parking will be shared, they will be able to use our parking as the plan, and then we'll be able to use their parking. So, there should be sufficient, and there will be on-street parking as well on Locust Street. So, the plan is, is to try to make sure we have sufficient parking for all the uses that may go on that site, for the VFW building, for our park area, and the Boy Scouts when they meet, so.
So essentially, it makes the mini-golf even more accessible, because now there's more places to park.
Yes.
I think that's great.
I'm not completely sold on Edwards Park as the location for mini-golf. I definitely agree with Jeff about Dogwood not being an ideal location, too, and I would just like to explore other options. I think that Jackson Park would be a good location, and I also like maybe the area of the depot, if there was available land that we had. I just, I don't know that Edwards Park is the best place. It's, with DOT working on that area, and it's, it's that intersection, I don't think is the best intersection, so that's just my opinion.
By the depot could be fun, because then you could go to the farmer's market and play mini-golf, like a whole day.
Mayor vote, may I speak?
Yes, certainly.
My preference would be at the Dogwood Park, especially on the Church Street part of the park. I think one of the things that makes the mini-golf such an important historical aspect to Hendersonville, it is, it's on 25, and so when you're coming into Hendersonville, whether you ever go play golf there or not, you see it coming into town. And if it were at the Dogwood Park on Church Street, it would, it would serve that same purpose, that it would be a landmark that you would see driving through town. I think my concern with Edwards Park is, it would not have that same visual connection to people driving through town, because it's, you know, I know it's not far, but slightly off of 25 on North Main. Also, I just think the further it's moved from downtown, or down, or Main Street, I think it loses some of its character for people who come here and use it. So, moving it closer to downtown would be my preference, and I think it certainly would, could work well, and there would still be plenty of other room for other park amenities at the Dogwood Park. So, my vote would be to move it to Dogwood.
Clear as mud.
I, I like the idea of keeping it close, which would mean Edwards Park. I think it, it's going to be visible, and having that downtown might be just a little bit too intense, especially if there's a splash pad there. I think it's just going to be too wild and crazy, having everything there. And I like the idea of being able to have a picnic shelter at Edwards Park as well.
So, I've heard a variety of-
Mixed results.
You got three here, though.
I, I, I mean, I'm-
We have three for Edwards.
I'm counting three at Edwards. And, and the reason I would like to have some direction is obviously, we would like to start construction of the fire station sometime in, in early 2022, and we want to limit the disruption of the Putt-Putt not being available, right? So, the idea would be that we would do the planning and be able to move it, ideally, in the winter months, when the, when the Putt-Putt would not be open, and have it back open. Don't know that we're going to be able to do that, that's a little bit pie in the sky, I realize that, but we would like to have a good plan moving forward. So, how about this, how about we will move forward with planning at Edwards Park? We'll do some design work, do some planning, give you something to look at, and then bring it back to Council. That way, the planning is done, and that way, we can go from there. And if the Council wants to go in a different direction after you see that, then we can do that. Is that fair?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Connet, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith, Councilmember Smith.
In making those plans, would you please make sure that, because this, I will get lots of phone calls about this, that none of those plans include changing any aspect of the existing Boy Scout huts?
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, because if it touches that, then I will get lots of phone calls with regard to, you know, the Boy Scout troops. And, so, I guess in your plans, unless there's any objection from the Council, I would ask that the, the Boy Scout huts are going to stay where they are, like they are, unless we have some plan to move them somewhere else, like we did the Girl Scouts. But, we don't have that plan, so please don't include that, that's not part of this discussion.
Isn't that part of having enough room at Edwards Park?
Yes.
We wouldn't have enough room, right?
Well, well, actually, we, we think there will be enough room. We've had general discussions with the architects and feel like that, and their direction, to answer Councilmember Smith's question, was not to touch the Boy Scout huts, that was been the direction. But, we believe there will be enough room once we remove, but once they get in and do the design and the layout and those kind of things, we will know for sure. I mean, so until that happens, but we do feel like there, there is going to be enough property there to house the Putt-Putt in.
Two questions, one, who's in charge of the maintenance of the Boy Scout cabins?
So, under the current agreement with the school system, and Councilmember Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, the troops themselves, or their sponsorship agencies, which may be the Methodist Church, the Presbyterian Church, and the Lions Club is mine, they're responsible for maintenance at the current situation, under the agreement they have with the school system.
Is that transfer over?
Our plan was to transfer the same type agreement over to, to the city.
Okay, next question.
Jeff, may I comment on that part?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, that, those are, and that's just for the building only, so the grounds are not, technically not the Boy Scouts' responsibility, though I think, quite honestly, the troops probably wouldn't mind helping with that. But, as of right now, that's not the troops' responsibility, the, the grounds at the park, just the buildings.
Yeah, the building's the only thing I was questioning. And what about that old water fountain, is there any history of it that's lening and doesn't work? Do we have anything on that?
I don't know that we have any documented history. Obviously, Edwards Park was once a city park. Based on my little bit of research, and, and I would ask any of the historians in the room or in the county to, to help us, I believe that actually Edwards Park was part of a much bigger park prior to the construction of Locust Street. There was some reference in, I just stumbled upon it in the 1990, 1919 minutes of the City Council, where the first park in Hendersonville was on North Main Street, and it was 16 acres, which that park is not 16 acres, but if you look along the stream bed there, there's some other rock walls and things that are very similar to that water fountain, Councilmember Miller. So, wondering if, so that if, my thought is, before they developed Cold Springs Park, that a lot of that acreage in there was part of the, what was the city's first park, which was at that end of Main Street, and it was given to the city back in 1919.
Thank you.
And you just stumbled upon that info?
Yep.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, I stumbled onto that, yeah.
You go back to 1919 a lot?
I like to read the minutes some days, there you go. Actually, it was before our retreat, I was just looking at various decades, and just came across that in the 1919 minutes. So, that's the, so I have direction for Putt-Putt. Next item is the splash pad, which the Kiwanis Club is raising money for, and the city has agreed to participate. I have two options here, the first one being the Dogwood Park, which would be the signature, it'd be the signature amenity in that park, close proximity to downtown and neighborhoods. Another alternative, which may not fit, but I thought I'd put it out there, is possibly also located next to Edwards Park, but- But based on the previous conversation, this may not be acceptable. Would be near the putt-putt, and you could group the amenities. And then the question here too, are there other locations that you would want to consider, the splash pad? But, so I'll stop there and ask questions there.
Man, I've been trying to get a splash pad downtown for like as many years as I've had kids. So I'm so excited for it to be downtown. Yes, and I think Dogwood Park is such a great location for it. So excited.
I know the, the club is excited about that location, the Kiwanis Club.
That's where I saw it.
Okay, I just.
I'm just, right in the middle of that beautiful park.
I hear you.
I would agree, Dogwood Park is the best location.
Okay, very good, we'll move forward planning it. And then, and then the, the, the final piece is Dogwood Park, just again, checking in here. Just want the council and the public know that, and talk about prioritization. There'll be future discussions regarding Dogwood Park. But remind everyone, we couldn't start the, the park until the parking deck is constructed. There's been some discussion about should we delay to see if the private hotels are gonna begin this construction, destruction, construction. If we, part of that will delay the implementation of proposed amenities. If we decided to, if we decided to delay, then obviously the splash pad would be delayed. The putt-putt is, is no longer, would be delayed because we'd move forward on Edwards Park. Question, is there a better use for this property? Should we consider looking for other downtown park locations? Just tossing it out there, see if it lands or not lands. And then, and then where does it sit on the prioritization scale? So just wanted to have a little bit more discussion about Dogwood Park. Make sure we're all ready to move forward and get some clear direction regarding the park.
So I would anticipate that the funding for the splash pad will be done in the next six to eight months, just based on the traction that we've received in the last couple of weeks. And I know that, I think the community and the club that's raising the money for it would wanna see that done as soon as it could be done. Selfishly, I would also like to see it done as soon as it could be done, so I could go and play. So I feel like it's a pretty high priority, from my standpoint, to make it happen as soon as we can, depending on the parking garage timeline.
I'm just gonna be quiet for a few minutes.
So I have a question, Lindsay, and that is, let me ask Mr. Connet. What time, when are we supposed to now begin, starting on the parking deck construction?
Councilmember Smith, we should hopefully have the guaranteed maximum price at the end of August moving forward. But I think where the plan is, I'm looking at Assistant Manager Polly.
October, November.
October, November is when we're supposed to start construction.
Okay. I suppose the, the issue there would be if the splash pad is in the middle of the parking lot, that's one thing. If it's on one corner of the parking lot, could you not? So I guess that's all in the design. But if it were on the edge, it seems to me that that amenity could potentially begin construction before the, the parking deck were finished. And I'm asking Lindsay, is, is that kind of what your thought is? Or what are you proposing?
I mean, I was anticipating that it wouldn't start until the parking garage was completed. But if we wanna start it sooner, I'm not gonna be upset about it.
But if we waited till the parking lot, sorry, parking garage to be finished, what would the, I know that nobody can predict the future, but what is the thought of when that might be?
So, the, it was only, Councilmember Smith, I think the, the parking deck would be about 11-month project, 10 to 11, 12-month project. So we would expect that, real, honestly, by the time we did the planning and design and construction drawings and everything, we could, we would not be able to start the Dogwood Park or the splash pad, I don't think, before that time anyway. I think by the time you do all the design and lay out the park, because you would really wanna do a complete design of the park to make sure you've got everything where you wanted it, and that it, it worked well. So even, I think even if we wanted to, we wouldn't be ready to, to do it before the parking deck was finished.
That's okay with me. I just think that's a reality, that even if the funds are raised for the splash pad, there's no way to accelerate the construction of it.
Right. And I think in the club's mind, we were anticipating probably spring of 2023 to construct it, and hopefully it'll be ready by that summer. Does that timeline sound feasible? I mean, nobody knows what's gonna happen with the weather or construction or whatever, but.
You're gonna have to do it all at once.
Yeah.
And it's gonna have to, asphalt's all gonna have to come up. They're gonna have to know where to run the lines. You can't piecemeal something like this, in my opinion, just from a little limited construction I've been involved in, but. We shall know by then, I think we'll have a better idea. You'll have a better idea where hotels are gonna be.
We'll understand, understand it from staff that it's a priority, and we should begin working toward a design of Dogwood Park. And then ultimately, once we have the design, then we could move forward with construction and and go forward that way. That's what I'm hearing.
I love the idea of the Dogwood Park. But I also love the idea of a downtown hotel. And we have, most of us have supported a downtown hotel for the last two years almost. And so I guess I'm a little worried about committing that parcel to a park if there is potential hotel development for it. Because that's obviously gonna benefit downtown. But, and I definitely wanna see a splash pad downtown. But the timeline of that, even if we said, we're not gonna sell Dogwood at all, we're gonna convert it to a park, it's like minimum of two years, like at this point, like minimum, to even develop it as a park. And so if we're really, really wanting to see a splash pad much, much sooner than that, then that is definitely not feasible to do. I mean, am I right about the timelines? I mean, park development is a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it will be, I think, Councilmember Hensley, I think two years is, is a good timeline from where we are to, to, to a park opening. And I think that's a good suggestion. But the one reason we wanted to have the conversation today is so we begin the planning of that. You know, a lot of it is in pre-development work, and then design, and then bidding, and those kind of things. So absolutely, two years.
Then you could still, you know, withdraw it if it came necessary to use that for a hotel. Because I too agree that it was all kind of contingent, in my mind, of two hotels almost.
Right.
One for sure. And I do understand what you're saying there. But you can get into the planning so you're not so far behind. And you can still, you know, you can punt. If, if somebody comes along and, and just makes you an offer, you can't refuse on that. But at least you're not stagnant. Okay.
Anything else?
Can I, I'd like to respond to one of your questions on there, about where does it sit on the prioritization scale?
Yes, sir.
And, and I have to say, behind putt-putt and behind tennis courts, I guess it's number three. At least in my mind, because we have obviously a plan to put a splash pad there and to put a park there. So I don't know how that falls on the scale, but you, you have that question on there. That'd be my response to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
John, are you gonna speak about the grassy area adjacent to?
Library.
The library in the Board of Education?
So let me go to the next.
So the next slide.
So I, I was not planning to do that tonight, but I'll be happy to if you want to. But I wanted to put in everybody's minds that this would be a perfect topic for a total two-hours workshop meeting, where we really looked at, because I think park development, park amenities, park programming is gonna be a hot topic for the city council going forwards. So with our growth and just the idea of providing great sense of place in our community. So I would propose at a future workshop meeting, maybe in a couple of months, that we look at, you know, we look at the Acusa Trail and how we may possibly connect it to the Oklahua Greenway. Also, are there amenities that we want to, to offer along the Acusa? I was looking at the, the park master plan that was done some years ago. And Councilmember Smith was on that committee that did the park master plan. And it included, you know, Lennox Park is in there, which Lennox Park is gonna be very close to the.
On top of it.
On top of the Acusa, as well as the Whitmire Center is not gonna be far, plus the plans that we showed you for South Main Street at your workshop meeting. So there's gonna be lots of opportunity, and I know there is gonna be a desire on how, or discussion on how we use the property behind, as Councilmember Miller said, the property behind the administrative offices of the schools.
One thing I do want, just because I'm getting peppered with questions about it, it's gonna stay green. I mean, it's, we're not gonna be building anything on it. There's not, there's no buildings going on. It's, we've agreed with them.
Our, our commitment to the school system was that it would remain as, as, as green space, public recreation space, that it would not be a building, it would not be a city facility.
Could it be a playground?
That was just the only thing I wanted to say, it's gonna stay green now.
I'm sorry?
Could it be a playground?
Yes, it could be a playground, yes, yeah, I mean.
Just park playground. I was just thinking, library, playground, it's great, good date.
All I wanted to say was, we're not gonna put.
A building.
Some type of a building on it.
Yeah, it's a state facility.
So my point, unless you wanna have further discussion tonight regarding additional parks, I feel like it'd be an opportunity to, to spend a good couple of hours and maybe in, in a couple of different meetings in the next year, talking about how you want to proceed with park space and green space and, and green, and development, so.
John, are you recommending we do that in lieu or as part of a mid-month meeting?
I'm suggesting we do it as part of a, a mid-month meeting, that that will, the, the only topic for that particular meeting will be park space and green space. We've got things planned out through September. Councilmember Smith, I think it would probably be around October or November when we got back to this, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that's all that I have for this, unless council has any other questions.
Anything else tonight? Not, okay, thank you. City Council comments, is there anything anyone would like to bring up this evening? Not, City Manager report, did you have anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, Boards, Commissions Committee appointments. Point a city representative to the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium. I have been a member of that for 20 years. Something like that. Most of the representatives are staff members. So I thought that that might be appropriate, an appropriate appointment for a staff person. Want to say anything more about that?
Only would add that Tyler Henry is, is our code enforcement officer. Also deals with a lot of opportunities to, to help people find affordable housing. It also is a particular interest of his in, in graduate school. And also in his internship, he did a lot of work in affordable housing and would like to expand his knowledge in this area. So we feel like this would be a good opportunity for him. And also develop our staff capacity for affordable housing to work with other professionals in this area and other nonprofits related to affordable housing.
Who you, who do you recommend?
It is Tyler Henry, he's our.
You would have a chance to meet a lot of the other people in the region working on affordable housing.
Mayor vote, can I ask a question? Is there any, normally when we put people on things, there's like terms and things of that nature. Is there any term restriction on how long someone can be on? Obviously, you've been on it a very long time.
No, no restrictions.
Yeah, 20 years, Jerry, that's the restriction.
No, I, I meant, if, if a sta, if a staff member were on it.
It, it's, as far as the consortium goes, it's just whoever we appoint. If we would like to make this appointment for a certain number of years and then rethink it, we could certainly do that.
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't implying that. I just didn't know if we had, if we needed to think, he, he would only be there for a certain period of time, and then we need to be thinking about someone else. But I, no, we can put him on there as long as he's willing, as long as we're willing for him to serve.
Madam Mayor, would you like a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move the city council appoint Tyler Henry to the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium.
Is there any discussion? Not, we will vote on appointing Tyler Henry to the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium. Ms. Hensley? Aye. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So we will let them know that he will be attending, I think the next meeting is in September. So we'll give him time to, to get into that and get some, I'm sure they, they will send him some materials. Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? If not, we are adjourned.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
Aye.
Enjoy the rest of your trip.